Welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of May 13th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Franci, I could take the role, please.
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you.
Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, announcements and committee reports is first, and I've got a couple announcements. A reminder, the Anacortes Boat and Yacht Show opens this Thursday, 10:00 a.m., May 16th. It goes on until Saturday, 6:00 p.m. There'll be over 250 boats for sale and on display, 95 exhibitors. Tickets have been sold in 22 different states. So let's be good hosts, as always, to our guests that are visiting. They are expecting 4,000 paid attendees. Also, there'll be a ribbon cutting for the Samish Indian Nations 34th Street Housing Project on Friday, May 17th, 2:00 p.m. This project marks the first affordable housing development for Samish elders. Also, I'd like to thank the Anacortes Police Department and the Parks Department for managing the crowds at Washington Park viewing the Aurora Borealis this weekend, also known as the Northern Lights, so nice surprise event, great event, and they manage those crowds well. Also, we hope to have the flower baskets up this Friday. Thanks again to the Parks Staff, working with the Chamber and other folks to make our city even more beautiful than it already is. And then a reminder, Skagit County Commissioners will host a public hearing regarding the new solid waste rates, 8:30 a.m., 21st of May, and that's Tuesday. And then one more, Anacortes, very proud to be hosting the Anacortes High School Boys' Baseball State Playoff Games this weekend. Thank you again to our Parks Departments for maintaining our great ball fields and go Hawks. Okay, Finance Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. So we had a finance meeting on May 9th, and we were with, we had our city engineer join us to discuss a project that is currently slated for 2027 to start and then to complete in 2028. And it's a project that's part of, at the water treatment plant, and it's the discharge meters. So after the water has been processed through the water treatment plant, then it goes through these, there's two meters boxes we learned about, and then goes and is distributed throughout the water system. There was a sinkhole nearby in 2021, and in 2023, the transmission line over the water meter broke. And so there's these two vaults, and it's been determined that these meters need to be replaced. That was supposed to be done in a couple years, but because we need to work on the vault and do some of this other work, it makes sense for us to accelerate the, these, replacing these discharge meters in the next year. So this will come as an amendment, most likely, in July approximately, but they just wanted to run it by the Finance Committee to make sure that we felt that we could take on that burden. It would come out of, obviously, the utilities. There is an understanding that because there was a sinkhole due to, we believe it was the flood over the dyke, that FEMA would qualify this project under their small projects, project, which is under $1 million is kind of their benchmark. So we will get more information on that when we start to do some of the design work, and then at that point, we'll get a better understanding of how much FEMA is willing to cover. So we'll replace the meter, replace the vault, probably do about 60 feet of section of pipe, but that's very minimal compared to the actual project. And we'll be good to go, and people at the water treatment plant will be able to sleep at night because it's really important meters, and if they go out, they start shooting water up in the air really high. So that, so that's good. So that was what we discussed, and we were in support of it as the Finance Committee.
Any questions? Okay, next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. So the HACs Committee met on Thursday, but not in the usual manner because we were visited by the Washington Senate Committee on Land Use, Government, and Tribal Affairs, of which Senator Lovelit is the Chair, and she brought with her a Vice Chair and one more Senator and legislative staff. And their goal was to see what effect some of their legislation that they, that they championed and passed has, how it has affected us on the ground here in Anacortes. So they toured the Anacortes Family Center and the Samish, the Samish Project, and I think maybe even the Commons. We didn't join them for that, but we were there initially, and we had a great roundtable discussion about what we're doing here and the progress that we've made with our Affordable Housing Sales Tax that was passed by the citizens and where, how that money is being split between the Housing Authority and the Family Center and all the good that that is generating in housing for people. So it was, it was really great. It was great to have a wider context for what's happening at the state level, and they really were very interested in what's working for us and what we would like to see. One of the things that we brought up that was a potential sales tax exemption for the building of affordable housing. So that would save close to 10% for the developers of affordable housing right off the bat. So for example, if the Anacortes Family Center had had that exemption when they built their most recent building, they could have gone up a whole nother floor because that would have given them, I can't remember if it was like $600,000 more to spend. So it frontloads the savings, making it more likely for builders to build those kind of projects rather than waiting for a multifamily tax exemption down the road. So they, there seemed to be some, some receptivity to that, and anyway, it was, it was great. It was really a really good experience.
Thanks. Any questions for the HACs Committee? Okay, I'll move on to Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Planning Committee met just before this meeting. It was Moulton, Ms. Cleland McGrath, and myself, along with Ms. Grage and Mr. Coleman. We talked about our impact and connection fee waivers. We have two sets of waivers, one for low-income housing and separately for ADUs. There are a couple of new state laws in this space, and Public Works is engaged in planning and will be calculating system development charges based on those plans. So that will likely lead us to a code update, mostly a mechanical code update. We have provisions for these kinds of waivers and charge reductions in Title 13, in Title 19, and in Title III. A lot of them replicate each other. So we considered the possibility of consolidating those various provisions, directly addressing charges for ADUs, and making sure everything is in alignment with the state laws that were passed this year. Code update, then, assumedly will follow. Stay tuned.
Questions? Okay, next up, Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Public Safety Committee met on May 7th. It was myself, Councilmember Hubick, Councilmember Cleland McGrath, the Mayor, and of course, Chief Harris and Chief Floyd. And on the fire end, Chief Harris shared that all new recruits are adjusting well. We had that great pinning ceremony not that long ago, and all the new recruits are adjusting and doing very well. They do have one new hire that was sent to the Stanwood Academy that's going to be graduating in July. Surprisingly, they moved up the delivery for the ladder truck, so it's now scheduled to arrive the end of June, so plenty of time for the Fourth of July Parade, where they will also be showcasing the 100th anniversary of our antique fire truck. One of the things that we also learned is anytime you get a new fire truck, they do what is called a push-in ceremony, where maybe some of you have heard of this before. It was new, definitely new to me, where the firefighters, as well as members of the community, any of us that want to join in, can literally push the fire truck into service, just kind of, you know, a push-in ceremony. So I thought that was kind of neat, and that'll be after the Fourth of July Parade. Brush 29 is ready to deploy for state use, and this is great because not only will the state then play, pay for any deployment, but they'd also pay for any overtime fees that are accrued for that in case they need to use it. On the police side, Chief Floyd let us know that the Skagit County Drug Task Force will be looking to present to council at some time next month to review kind of the great work that has been done by this team over the past year, where they're going to be headed. We have had two OD deaths since our last public safety meeting, so there's definitely still some challenges out there when it comes to drugs, so that'll be good to have an update on that. Two officers, as far as staffing goes, two officers are going to finish their field training next week, and then they'll be out on their own. So they'll be running their own units. And then one officer is making progress, so we're looking forward to them getting that point as well. And then another officer is set to graduate from the academy on June 27th. And then one officer graduated from the Parks Academy in December, which is nice because then they just have to do an equivalency training, which just focuses on Washington state law, Washington-specific rules, and then he'll go right into field training. We have two individuals in the background process right now, and then still four vacancies left to fill from the levy lift. But again, there's two that are in background right now, so if they work out, then we'll only have two spots left. We also talked about promotional testing that is happening. This is where officers will be tested, so that should a promotion to sergeant or further up the ranks become available, they'll have reports on that. This is a process that takes place every two years, and it does go through a third-party consultant, and we save money on that because it's the same consultant that the fire department uses when they go through the same process. Also, chiefs and sheriffs in the region met with our legislators from our district, and Chief Floyd felt it was a very productive session and said that Representative Lenkinoff has taken a very active role on some policy changes and collaboration to get some legislation drafted in preparation for their, their next session. Also, just a couple of topics that came up was we talked a little bit about financial fraud and how some seniors have been falling vulnerable to financial fraud and the process that reporting that to the police can actually help. And then we also talked a little bit about some mental health needs that we have and some areas that would be worth discussing as far as processes for folks who may be suffering from domestic abuse and might not know where to turn or go to. So it was a really, a really good discussion. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Thank you. No, it's, I thought it was incredibly important to mention that about financial fraud, the phone calls that are being made, they're increasing, and you know, they've gotten pretty savvy, I think. But you know, I think that that's something, given our population, that is something that we need to talk more about and make sure everyone is aware of what we can do about it, you know, whether it's tracing the phone number and the follow-up to that or whatever that is. But I look forward to hearing the continuation of your report on that. Thank you.
And I believe our community service officer, he does regular, I know he does regular talks at the senior center, as well as I think there's an article in the upcoming A-Town, so more, yeah, that's an area we're definitely focusing on. Any other announcements or committee reports that I may have missed? Okay, 3E is a Planning Commission reappointment, and it is my recommendation the following reappointment to the Planning Commission be confirmed by City Council. It's Paul Ryan, and this is for a term of six years. So Mr. Ryan was initially appointed to the Planning Commission the 10th of July of last year to replace Jack Curtis on his resignation, and Mr. Ryan completed Mr. Curtis's term and is now being presented for reappointment to that full term, and he's been showing up at the meetings in the interim. I'd ask for council's confirmation.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Thank you. I move to confirm the appointment of Paul Ryan if the Planning Commission is presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Young to reappoint Mr. Ryan to Plan and Commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And on to public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council on anything that we do not have on our agenda, because we do have a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, but I have two members that signed up, and so I, the ones who sign up, go first, and I've got Linnea McCord. And the topic is where push for 3,000 units in Anacortes is coming from. But I'm guessing that's not all you wanted to say, because that, okay. So you know the drill, so if you state your name and the city you live in, please, in three minutes.
Linnea McCord, Anacortes. All right, last week, a member of the tax-paying Anacortes resident group was stopped from talking about United Nations because the idea was it didn't apply. That's not true. Several weeks ago, I already pointed out the agreements between the World Economic Forum and the United Nations, United Nations, World Economic Forum and Habitat, and it is the source of the terms affordable housing, climate change, sustainable development. Those terms didn't come from America, they came from Davos, Switzerland, and all the buzzwords that are currently being used to jam 3,000 units of homes in our area of 18,000. Now, right after that, in order to establish that it was a conspiracy, was pointed out that Anacortes has an agreement with the ICLI, which is United Nations, was formed by United Nations, it's now called an NGO. That's an important word for you to remember because NGOs are how United Nations and World Economic Forum are working. For example, Habitat for Humanity is an NGO, and this is a 44-page document on greenhouse gases, and this is going to be important because the people in Anacortes are going to find out what that means for them. Olympia is a member of that group, and so they have done greenhouse gases, also done by the United Nations in October of '23. Now, I want to read to you what some of the cities that decided to get away from the ICLI and stop belonging to it have said, because I think it says everything. And that is, "A flyer from the group Democrats Against UN Agenda 21," because that's exactly what ICLI was doing, and now it's called Agenda 2030, that's World Economic Forum, that's Davos, "is representative of the common complaints. Using ICLI greenhouse gas emission goals, your local government is in the process of controlling where and how you live, what you eat, what your children learn, and what laws you will live under. With the cover of environmental concern, your personal rights are being restricted." And this is a quote from the London School of Economics. So it can be demonstrated that the goals are coming directly from United Nations through the World Economic Forum, through the ICLI, and here's why you should care, because guess who's funding the 11 million illegals? United Nations and non-governmental entities like Salvation Army, Ronald McDonald House, Red Cross, Protestant and Catholic religious groups, World Council of Credit Unions, without record-keeping. I think you'll find that there's a lot of people that will become very aware of who's doing what and why. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Suzanne Roner, and the topic is housing.
Thank you for this opportunity. Suzanne Roner, Anacortes, and I will be relevant today. On May 7th, I attended the housing proposal presented by the Irwin Group. They discussed the Meritage communities that they developed in other areas. These communities consist of rental housing with a variety of options and square footage and number of bedrooms. Some buildings look like townhomes, while others look like multi-level apartment buildings. They are working on a proposal to build 100-unit development off of Sharp's Corner with the possibility of having a 20 additional bonus units if certain conditions for affordable housing are met. There are two ongoing themes I have noticed regarding the housing situation in Anacortes. Number one is that housing is unaffordable. Of course it is, it's unaffordable everywhere. Inflation has a huge effect on this, as do current economic policies and increases in regulations. The second theme is that there are people who live in Anacortes who are unable to live in Anacortes due to the limited supply of housing. I also believe that is true, but does anyone have any idea what that number is? Is it one person? Is it 10? Is it 100? Is it 1,000? Has anybody done the research? Is it the default assumption that everyone who works in Anacortes wants to live in Anacortes? Maybe there are other considerations that are being overlooked. How many people work in Anacortes but live elsewhere because they want to live somewhere else? Perhaps their family is established in another town, and the family has made the decision to remain in that town, so commuting to Anacortes for work was a deliberate choice. Or perhaps rent is less expensive in another town, which could be, could incentivize commuting to Anacortes. Or perhaps their house is paid for, or they have a low interest rate on their mortgage. In that case, commuting to Anacortes for work would make more economic sense than selling their home and buying a home in Anacortes with a higher interest rate mortgage. Another statistic I heard nobody talk about is how many people live in Anacortes but work somewhere else. Maybe Anacortes is already a thriving bedroom community, and we just don't know it. How many of the 100 or 120 units would be scooped up by people who want to live in Anacortes but will not be working there? And another huge issue when talking about our population growth, nobody defines what population growth means. It's birth rate, death rate, and immigration. The United States' birth rate has been declining since the 1950s. Our death rate has also declining, although it's starting to go up a little bit, but the majority of our population gross, growth is due to immigration, and that's historically what our country was, but we are having uncontrolled immigration, and one cannot help but wonder how much of this housing crisis is due to uncontrolled immigration. And the, oh, am I done? I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? And I don't see any hands online. Okay, thank you. Next up is Consent Agenda, Items 5A and B, council.
Mayor.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, second by Mr. Young to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Onto Item 6A. This is a public hearing, a second public hearing for an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan, and Ms. Snyder is already there, ready to go.
Hello, Mayor and Council. This is the second meeting of the public hearing, and I have not received any comments from the public. This is a very straightforward, two changes to a five-year consolidated plan that was passed in early 2023 to spend our consolidated funds. One change will be to support efforts to expand opportunities for persons with disabilities as an objective on Page 3. The other change is to add in $51,468 that was remainder from the previous plan. And once council approves this, I can send this on to HUD for approval and then get to work funding projects. Thank you.
All right, great summary of that, but this is the last opportunity if any member of the public wishes to comment on those changes. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to council for deliberation or action.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I think these are good changes to the plan, and the two projects that will be funded with the money carried over are for curb cuts at 24th Street and H Avenue and ramps to facilitate ADA access to public transportation to our bus system. And the second project provides almost $18,000 for exterior maintenance of the Anacortes Family Center Emergency Housing Shelter. So we're not able to, to, to put a lot of this funding that we get from the CDBG grant from HUD to capital projects, so it's really nice to have the opportunity to do so and be able to see, see the results so soon. So if there are no other comments, I move to approve the recommended amendments to the CDBG 2023 to 2027 Consolidated Plan for the city of Anacortes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the amendments to the Community Development Block Grant 2023-2027 Consolidated Plan. Any additional discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. I just really wanted to comment on the importance of ADA access. You know, we, as life happens for all of us, you know, making sure that we have mobility, continuity around our city is ever more important, and I really appreciate the emphasis that our city is making on trying to assure that. There are costs associated with it, but when we have any opportunity, I really appreciate that. I think that, you know, the more our world becomes usable by everyone, the better we all become. So I just wanted to applaud that and, and say my support. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Hubick. Mr. Franci, I'd vote, please.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Ms. Hubick.
Yes.
Mr. Fantini.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Ms. Snyder. Next up is Item 7A, Community Action Quarterly Report, and I guess Mr. Coleman will introduce. Mr. Coleman.
Good evening. So bear with me for a moment while I load a presentation from Dulce Vasquez Cruz, who is the Resource Centers Manager with Community Action here at the Anacortes office, and she'll be giving a quarterly report and progress update for that office. Sorry, I was, uh... Didn't get this until the last minute, so not loading it until just now. I apologize for the delay.
That was a pretty short delay. Well, welcome back, Ms. Vasquez Cruz.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I'm Dulce Vasquez Cruz, the Resource Center Manager, and I oversee Mount Vernon and Anacortes Resource Center. I'm going to go ahead and give our quarterly, first quarterly update for 2024. We have some space updates at the Anacortes Resource Center. We have, we now have our name up on the building. We're official now, and we're working on a plaque that says that the work is being done in support from the city, from the city of Anacortes. And so recently, our most recent success story that I'm really happy to share with you all, we had two elderly folks come into our Resource Center in Anacortes, and they were going through a really hard time. They were evicted, they're living in an unstable place, and they went to our office and asked Gina, who's our resource coordinator, and asked for some support, and what Gina was able to do was she was able to talk to folks in our Mount Vernon office and really kind of pull together these resources for these, these elderly folks, and the end result was we found, they found space to live in, we were able to help them with their moving cost, and we were able to help them exit homelessness, which was a huge win for our office. And we have, another update is now we have five amazing volunteers and one in the audience right now. We're super happy to have them in our office, and they're there to answer the phones, greet clients as they're coming in, and really help them, sort of screen them for any community action services and refer them to Anacortes Resources. And we are still working on getting some programs out there in our Resource Center. We're wanting to, right now, we only have WIC available for clients on a walk-in basis. Our street outreach team will be joining us pretty soon, and we'll have our employment program taking, occupying the space that we have in our office. And some, now some data updates. So we have served 233 unduplicated clients so far, and we've been able to refer a lot of people to our Commodity Seniors Food Program, and we've enrolled 76 seniors in that program. WIC, since having them in the building, it's more accessible to clients in Anacortes. They're able to go in the office, get their babies measured, and just, we also got this amazing donation from the Seroptimists, and we, they provided diapers, it's part of their community baby shower, and we've been able to distribute some of that to our Anacortes families. We also have, from our street outreach team, they managed to serve 182 services to Anacortes residents, and we provided 27 hygiene snack pack kits to Anacortes residents, as well as 321 services from our energies departments to our Anacortes residents. So we've been seeing a So we've been seeing a lot of success. And with our Care Coordination Service Model, which is our Resource Navigation Program, we've been able to provide, right now it's at 55 services to Anacortes residents to specific households, and we're hoping to increase that number up. We are still referring clients to Anacortes Resource Centers as well as any Mount Vernon services that might benefit the household. And we are also working really closely with our Senior and Disabled Program, which we've been able to refer 39, well, serve, we've provided 39 services to our Anacortes residents. And we have 55 people in Anacortes receive care coordination services, so that walking alongside folks, helping them access services. And we have 28 new folks have been served by our street outreach program, and 19 have been served by our Recovery Navigator Program. And you'll see that in total, including our Mount Vernon Resource Center, so 233 Anacortes residents, including our Mount Vernon office, and 43 of those households were from Anacortes, were served from our Anacortes office. And then we have 321 received energy assistance, and we just see these numbers going up. And how to help? Please continue to spread the word on our Anacortes Resource Center. We will be having a ribbon cutting by the end of the month, and we hope that you all can join us. And we'll be spreading the news on more details on how to RSVP and how to join us on our ribbon cutting. And we also want more drivers and volunteers to do some in-home care, and, I mean, so in-home services, and please, anyone who wants to donate to community action is more than welcome to. Any questions?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I know there will be a bunch of questions, but thank you for the great presentation, and it seems well-established now in the location and providing those services, just for the public that may not be aware, the city contracts with Community Action to provide this Resource Center and requires them to come give quarterly reports to council, and so thank you. So with that, questions? And Mr. Young?
Thank you. You know, it's probably no secret that I'm a fan of Community Action. I am for a variety of reasons. One is when I first moved here to the county 14 years ago, some of Community Action staff reached out to me. Of course, I didn't need any other services, but it was just a wonderful thing, the fruit basket that Lynn brought and the director and all, it was just heartfelt and heartwarming. What I really appreciate about what I've been able to see and what I know, having originally served on Community Actions Board, was the continued work in the belly of the struggles that life tends to throw at us all. And I really appreciate that. And then I've had an early preview of the building. I went in, I just stopped in, I think the mayor was cutting a ribbon someplace, and after I left there, I went down to Community Action and they gave me the tour. I am so hopeful. Our world needs a lot of help for us all to have hope and to be able to move forward. And what I'm thankful for is the many people, not only of Scadja, but particularly Anacortes, that given so many ways through so many organizations toward helping people move forward. That's why I'm ever so proud to call this home, but I want to thank Community Action for their presence here, and I look forward to hearing more about the work that's being done here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments, council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
Yeah, I had a question, excuse me. I had a question on some of the numbers that you put up. So you had mentioned that 43 residents in Anacortes were served. Because you have that Resource Center now, which by the way, congratulations on that, that seems like that there's quite a few, it's opening up kind of new opportunities for you within Anacortes. So these, would you say these would be people that wouldn't have necessarily gone over to the Mount Vernon Resource Center? Because I'm assuming a lot of the folks that need these services probably don't necessarily have the transportation for that?
Yeah, definitely. I think that having our office where it is right now in Indian Anacortes really has bridged that gap in services. We're now here in Anacortes where people don't have to travel, you know, so miles away, and then, you know, they get over to our Mount Vernon office and they're like, well, now I need help getting back to Anacortes because that's where I live. So having our office here in Anacortes has helped a ton.
That's great. And then I just had another question. I could kind of recognize all those categories and what would come from them. You know, I saw, you know, five that were helped with employment. That's great. You also mentioned information and referrals. What type of referrals are you seeing?
So when, a lot of the referrals that we're seeing for our Anacortes residents, majority of those are to our senior and food boxes, the commodity boxes. That's the majority of the resources, the referrals that we're doing at our Anacortes office. And from what I'm hearing everywhere else, it's energy assistance, it's also senior and disabled referrals. So it's a lot of community action referrals that we're tracking on, community action referrals and outside providers. But the majority of tracking is for community action programs.
Great. Thank you, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez Cruz. It's great to see things ramping up and the number of unduplicated clients. And also, the energy assistance program is so valuable for people with utilities being so expensive, and it's something that can help keep them in their homes to be able to pay these bills. And that is one of the things that your organization is great at doing, is helping prevent people from sliding into homelessness with all the resources that you provide. I should say "we" because I am serving on the board currently, and I'm proud to do so. So thanks, and it's so great having, being, having you be here in Anacortes, and I'm looking forward to the ribbon cutting. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks so much. Appreciate it. All right, next up is 7B. This is Downtown Alliance, a year in review, and I guess Jordan Hay, you're ready to go. And I know we have a guest with us via Zoom, and I'm sure you'll introduce our guest as well.
Being shared online now? Hey, John, is this being shared online now, or do I need to do anything special?
Janelle, can you see this? Yeah, she can see it.
All right. Thank you for inviting us here to speak today, Mayor Miller, council people. And I'd also like to thank, I think we probably have about 20 people here who are volunteers with our organization, so I'd like to thank them for the time, they give all the time and for coming here to listen today. I'm Jordan Hay, and I've served as the Executive Director for the Downtown Anacortes Alliance for the past year and a half. I'd like to share what we've been up to, and I've also invited Janelle McCoy from Washington State Main Street, who can talk about the impact that Main Street is having in communities across Washington State. We're relatively new, but that way you can start to imagine what it could become. Our mission is to continue cultivating a vibrant, thriving downtown district. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization formed by local Anacortes folks to add vitality downtown. We've been selected as a Washington Main Street affiliate. We have over 80 active volunteers, which include downtown building and business owners, some of whom are here today, and retired experts in everything from architecture to marketing. We're tightly focused on having a vital downtown, and that means we partner with the rich set of other organizations in Anacortes to make downtown wonderful. The Downtown Anacortes Alliance believes in community. We believe that downtown is the heart of our community, our place to gather with friends, family, and community. We believe that a successful downtown is a powerful socioeconomic engine worthy of our support. We believe that Anacortes is fortunate to have so many people and groups and organizations focused on keeping our town an amazing place to live, work, play, and learn. We believe that the historic character of downtown Anacortes is an asset worthy of preservation and protection, and we believe that downtown Anacortes is alive with maritime heritage, past and present. But believing is well and good, but we're making a noticeable impact right now. I'd like to share some of the highlights of our work over the past year, and I've also left an impact, an impact report with each of you, so you have more detail if you want We've built social media channels with over 2,000 followers across Facebook and Instagram. Props to Kathy Enns, who's here today and who's done most of that heavy lifting. Our posts focus on showcasing all the good things that happen downtown. This includes encouraging folks to shop local for the holidays, thanking local business owners that repaint their buildings or shovel their snow particularly well, and celebrating the things that make downtown Anacortes unique. We held our first two annual events this year, Whale of a Sail in June and El's Night Out in November. Both of these events introduced locals and tourists to the great businesses that operate downtown all year round. We aim to have folks come downtown to shop and eat during these events and to discover a new favorite that brings them back over and over again, not just during the event. Both events were successful. Whale of a Sail had 33 businesses participate in our first year of organizing, up from four businesses in the previous year, and it won the Outstanding Award for Best Event in the state. And El's Night Out had a line around the block for the kickoff swag bags. We're planning to repeat both events this year, and we are thankful to the LTAC Committee at the city for contributing to both events in 2024. We've also started experimenting with events that build community and celebrate our heritage, both historic and natural. We held a special event for the release of the movie Boys in the Boat, featuring local hero Don Hume. We celebrated Anacortes' deep rowing history and heritage with contributions from the Anacortes Museum, the University of Washington Rowing Program, Don Hume's nephew Tim, the Samish canoe family, the Anacortes Waterfront Alliance, Oars, Anacortes Cinemas, and the Rockfish Grill. This is a special one for you, Anthony. For Earth Day, we celebrated Anacortes' natural heritage from the forest to the sea by working with over 25 different organizations, including the Poop Fairy, to celebrate our natural environment through music, art, and science. I'd like to thank the city for helping with the street closure that made the Procession of Species, sustainable fashion show from local merchants, activity booths from local organizations, and the Luminary Light Parade possible. We're focused on making downtown Anacortes feel beautiful and cared for. Part of this is creating resources that make it easier for downtown building and business owners to invest in their property. This includes everything from taking advantage of the historic renovation tax credits, which is a little complicated but of great value for historic buildings, to picking the right paint color. We repainted the Chipton War and Downtown Welcome sign to make an attractive entrance to downtown. We're thankful for the help we had from the city in removing and reinstalling the sign. I think Andy's here tonight. Thank you, Andy. And as part of the 2024 budget process, the city set aside funds to build on this work by repainting, repairing the masonry and lighting, so thank you for that. The Downtown Anacortes Alliance takes on projects that add beauty and a sense of momentum downtown. We recently completed the Post Office Community Garden. This project brought together the work of 25 volunteers, 15 local donors in the post office to build a beautiful and comfortable place to rest downtown. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Janelle. I'd like to introduce Janelle.
Thank you, Jordan. And I am going to screen share from my end, so pardon me as I take one moment to get set up.
Janelle is a Main Street Coordinator from Washington State Main Street, so that means she works with Main Streets all over the state.
Yes. Which is a great segue into simply saying, I do work for the Washington State Main Street Program. We are celebrating 40 years this year of supporting local programs, like the Downtown Anacortes Alliance, in their community and economic development work. And just a quick thumbs up if you are now seeing my slides. Thank you.
All right.
And we support these local programs like the AA because they are able to focus on building community wealth by focusing on local businesses and creating an entrepreneurial ecosystem to support those quiet dreamers who want to start their own business, celebrating the sense of Anacortes as a rich place of not only, I think, seafarers and folks attached to your maritime work, but newcomers as well, and welcoming into Anacortes all of the folks who are, it sounds like, moving in, and that seems like a lot. And they're also able to be connectors in your civic center. Not only do you all, as folks working for and with the city, know that it's important to make connections for residents, but they're able to say, yes, here's our town, and here are all the folks you might want to get introduced to, right from your own sort of front porch or living room. And finally, we do focus on the historic nature of Anacortes, and I know that they already work alongside your local certified local government, the museum in Anacortes. So let's zoom out for just a moment now that Jordan has shared things, to talk a little bit about the impacts of Main Streets more generally. I'm going to guess that you all may have heard some of the data around local dollars, and as recently as 2022, Amex Express showed that two-thirds of dollars spent at locally-owned businesses stay in a community compared to half of the dollars spent at box stores. But we asked ourselves, okay, that's great, and we appreciate national studies, but what about here in Washington State? What do we know about the fiscal and economic impact of Main Streeters? And so we conducted a study with John Stover and Associates, and from that, we were able to show that 22.5 million in sales tax was collected by Main Street communities over their comparable Washington Main Street cities without. And that's in no small part due to the activities that Downtown Anacortes Alliance is already working on that fall into festivals, events, marketing and promotion of the downtown as a district, attracting and retaining existing businesses, and that is in no part, no small part due to the technical assistance that they provide to those businesses. But as proud as we are that there are jobs created and a positive return on public investment, we like to brag that for every dollar of government money, you get $1.58 back in sales tax. We also know that it's not just about the numbers. We are really happy to see that we have an impact on social capital. So Main Street programs locally create a sense of community connection that is good for the health of residents as well as the wealth of residents. And the major themes that emerged from our impact study were around, again, the public realm, so preservation of historic buildings, streetscape, and public realm improvements, and just creating connections through partnerships, coalitions, and again, just community engagement. You heard that they have over 80 volunteers, and so that's just people getting together to do the work. And so we wanted to also offer a few examples from other Main Street communities where their cities have partnered with them. So I'll just preface this by saying, we're going to share a few examples, and these all are Main Streets that have both fiscal and staff support from their cities. Main Street as Convenor. So this is a fun story from Colville, where Colville Together, their local Main Street, has created a plaza. But the story here is, they actually piloted different parklets and different ideas during the closures from COVID, and were able to be really nimble and fast in changing that up and getting feedback from the community that then their city was able to use to make a very informed decision to create a permanent park. So this plaza is something that the city worked with them on, but was able to use all of that information and community engagement from Colville Together to know that it's what their residents actually wanted. And it doesn't hurt that they were also able to partner with Colville Together as a nonprofit to bring in $50,000 from a T-Mobile Hometown Grant. Next, we have Main Street as Catalyst. So this is us showing that Renton Downtown Partnership has worked with their city around, again, supporting the entrepreneurial ecosystem. They provided a pitch competition that engaged a lot of folks who wanted to start their own business or expand their own business, and they provided technical assistance as well as financial incentives to those folks. A fun thing that isn't on the slide that I get to share is simply, even the folks who didn't win the pitch competition have gone on to open up even the folks who didn't win the pitch competition have gone on to open up businesses. So I think, again, it's not always just what they walk away with, but those connections, the information, and the partnership. And finally, Main Street as Connector. This is from Centralia, and they really saw that folks were not coming back to volunteerism, weren't gathering as much even after COVID, because we all kind of lost that sense of what does it mean to be together in a place. And so they launched what they called their Block Party, a quarterly event aimed at families, which is free, and encourages folks to connect with each other. Here you see a photo from their summer one last year. And it's also really a way for folks to, again, connect with the myriad of other agencies and city work that happens. So we've heard other folks tonight talk about how important it is to make connections and referrals. Centralia has said, yes, let's go to the people. So they have nonprofits and city departments come to these block parties so that they can share information and people can gather. It certainly doesn't hurt that they have live music. So we offer these as examples to say, here are other local Main Street nonprofits doing work with their municipalities. And we wonder, what would you like to dream up as a future partnership with DAA? Knowing they're already doing good work, but you could be doing even more together. And so thank you, and we hope now we can take some questions and do a little dreaming.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for both the presentations. I know the city is committed to working with and supporting DTA. We're just trying to figure out the best way to do that.
Thank you.
But with that, I'll turn it over for questions, council comments.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you both for the excellent presentations. And one of the things I love about this organization is, well, I'll back up for one second, is that in Anacortes, we are excellent at attracting visitors. We're really, really good at that. And in the past, maybe not as great as attracting our locals to their downtown businesses. Mayor Miller and I are both very familiar with that, having owned local businesses that were very much supported by the community, so I'm not saying they weren't. But anyway, this, these initiatives, El's Night Out, the downtown sign, the new, the entrance looks gorgeous. All the things that you're doing are very tangible, and you've worked really hard to get a lot done, the Post Office Garden, in a short period of time with a lot of great energy, so kudos to you for that. And I'm gonna go ahead and cast my vote for block parties.
Thank you. And thank you. You know, a lot of the people in here have done all of that work, so.
Yeah, without the support of the volunteers, we know that all the organizations really need that. So I, again, appreciate it and, again, know for you volunteers that it's not effort not going unnoticed because we will continue to partner and work with the DTA. Mr. Walters.
I also want to echo Ms. Moulton's comments. It is really important that we get people out of their houses and downtown. You know, we had those two or so years where we told everybody, no, you need to go home, and you need to stay home. And we're still, I feel like, recovering from some of that. Some of us, you know, spent so much time just on the internet in those two days and not interacting with real people in our own town. And now we have an opportunity to change all that. This weekend, I had dinner and breakfast in a parklet downtown. Not the same, not the same parklet, two different parklets. And you see people that you know all, just sitting there, and that's a better experience than even if you were inside the restaurant, in my view. And there's so much more that we can do in the space. Pedestrianization of streets, I think, is not something that we should shy away from, although it should be done in a considered fashion. We, you know, have more opportunity to achieve more parking downtown, and maybe that can help with some circulation issues. All the work that you've done so far, though, especially the two events that you had last year, were just spectacular. I didn't really think you would outdo them, but then you had the Earth Day event this year, and you did outdo yourselves. So really, congratulations for the work that you're doing. So many of these things are the things that we have all talked about as things that need to be done in our downtown, and now finally, finally, you are doing it. So thank you. Let us know how we can help.
Excellent. There's so much good work we can do, so I'm excited.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. McDougall.
I think, you know, no question as well, just echoing the comments of my fellow council members. Thank you both for the terrific presentation. I really liked the mention of the number of the, you know, 2/3 of the money spent locally basically stays locally, and that becomes actually its own sort of multiplier effect because that money continues to circulate locally. So that's a very good thing. Also wanted to call out, love your logo and graphic design, great stuff.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Kalila McGrath.
I agree with everything that's been said so far, but I was just kind of curious if you could speak to what you're working on for this next year, 18 months?
Yeah. We're looking at building more community spaces. So the Post Office Community Garden was our first one. We're learning from that, so we'd like to do more plantings, more furniture throughout town. We're working diligently with John and Andy to try to get some streetscape design done. It's a little bit more complicated, it's a bigger project, long-term, for us all to work on together. So I think that's a huge piece. We're planning on running both Whale of a Sale and El's Night Out again, and we'll continue to do some experimentation. Some experiments work, some don't. You know, one of the things we didn't put in the highlight reel was we tried a very cheap promotion called Palentine's Day to see if we could do something where you could crank it out with very little effort, and it was, you know, okay, not great. So I think you can expect to see more of that experimentation, both in terms of events and in terms of physical space, as we learn what works. Yeah.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Frantini.
Thank you. And Jordan, I just want to compliment you as well. You have a lot of energy. I see you at all of these events and working these events. I'm like, does she ever go home? Does she? And Ursula's there with you all the time, so I've just, I, you know, I know you're, I think that's, that's great. As a fellow energy junkie, you know. So you said that you are relatively new, but I want to say you've already, as I think been echoed by several of the council members, have had a huge impact on our town. I mean, I can think of, the first time I was made aware of the Downtown Alliance was a few years ago at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony where you were doing glow sticks.
Oh, yeah.
And I think we've come a long way from handing out glow sticks to now parklets and community planting projects. And I just think it's great because things that are really good tend to catch on very quickly and grow very quickly. I've also had a lot of conversations with your board members, and I really appreciate how, when you were putting together your strategy and your goals for what you wanted to do, that you really used elements from the comprehensive plan that we put together here in, well, I wasn't on the council at the time, but that the council and community put together to kind of inform a lot of the decisions and the goals that you're making. And I really think it's important that as we go forward into our next comprehensive plan, that we make sure that your voice is heard and your organization's able to contribute to the next comprehensive plan because you're definitely a definition of what I would call a stakeholder when it comes to the comprehensive plan. Could you talk to me a little bit about, it sounds like you're, you're doing the most with what you have, but could you tell us, are you finding limitations around things like, I don't know, money or?
Yes, we were very new. We're working on building up our budget, you know, bit by bit. You know, I think we've been very fortunate in having a tremendous amount of private support, you know, more, I think, than a lot of Main Streets. But we're applying for community status again in July. And for those of you who don't know, the way a lot of the money flows for Main Street in the state is that once you're a Main Street community, then public institutions and private institutions can donate money and get 75% of it off the BNO tax credit. So in terms of being able to have a stable budget that goes on, we're looking at diversifying our income sources on a lot of streams, which we've had a lot of progress on. We have our eye on the prize, which is, once we have that community status, everything becomes a lot easier. And the number one, or the, we applied last year. If we'd gotten it, we would have been like, the fastest ever, but we didn't. And we got really great feedback. And the biggest piece of feedback we got that we have not yet actioned is to have support, public support, public municipal support. So I know we've talked to a number of you, we're trying to figure out how we can build that in before we submit our application at the end of June. We have the LTAC funding, which is helpful. We have support from the port, which is helpful. But being able to do a little bit more robust of a municipal funding will help.
Yeah, that's, that community status, I was, I was looking into that. And one of the things that I think is great is when you do have that community status, you're eligible for what's called the BNO tax credit.
Yes.
And that, if, would you talk a little bit about, about that? Because I think that's, that could be a game changer for you guys.
Yeah, I think Main Street works best when it's a public-private partnership. So you have public money, you have private money, you have volunteers coming in. And so the BNO tax credit is really, it's at a state level, and it's designed to accelerate that public-private partnership. And so that's where a business or a city government can give money to the organization and get 75% of that money back. And so that's money that Anacortes is just leaving on the table as long as we don't have a Main Street community.
So one of the things that you said is your last scorecard, the big mark, not against you, but the, the missing element was really your city municipal support and funding. Because I've looked at and heard about some other downtown, and not downtown Anacortes Alliances, but other city alliances do that, and a lot of them actually start with funding directly from the city and then do, go your path, whereas you guys have really started this on your own without any city funding.
Yeah.
Is that, okay. And then, so when is the next time you're applying for that community status? Because I just feel like when you're talking about being able to open it up for private businesses and even the city ourselves to donate a certain amount, or not donate, but budget a certain amount of money and then get 75% of it back, when's the next time you're applying for that?
We'll, we'll turn our application at the end of June, this June.
And is there, and I know we've already set our budget for this year, but is there anything that, that we can do as the city in order to help fulfill, like, to help you get that box checked out, off, so you can get, and what, what would that be?
Yeah.
I'm chomping at the bit to chime in here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because we're, 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 we want to send the public success. So council did authorize, you know, funding for the 2024 to work with them. We're trying to figure out the right mechanism that helps them get, whether it's a contract directly with them, because there's some legal issues about, you know, contracting directly with, you know, some other entity. But we think we can put something together in time to help them.
Give them money. We just don't know how to do it yet.
Yeah.
The way to put the nail, the, the direct feedback was municipal financial support, LTAC, and a contract for service ideally. So I think if we can put that together, it gives us a really good chance at a successful application this year.
Great. Well, let me know if there's anything I can do to help.
Thank you, TJ. I really appreciate it.
Thank you all again for that. It's just, it's that, what you do down there with those Whale of a Sale, I think Council Member Moulton said it perfectly. You know, we get a lot of visitors that come to town, but bringing out the locals, I mean, that is, can at times be a challenge, and you have done that in spades, so thank you.
We're happiest, I think, when you've been in some of those events, when we hear somebody go like, oh, I didn't know this store was here. That's great. You know, I'm coming back to buy, you know, my, my birthday present. And so I think when we have that effect, that's the multiplier we're looking for.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, TJ.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. Also wanted to say thank you to everybody for doing all of the work that you're doing. And like personally, hearing that Whale of a Sale was recognized as best in the state, like, that's phenomenal. I remember Lori, you and me in, when I was at the chamber, six, seven years ago, trying to brainstorm things, coming up with this idea. We had a gnarly graphic. It wasn't nearly as good as what y'all have now. But to see this program grow its own little orca wings and just kind of take off is phenomenal. I mean, it's, it's so good to encourage people to get out and get in their community. And I do also want to say thank you for, like, absorbing some of the smaller projects. Like, I'm coming out Sunday to help with the planter boxes. It's a fast, easy little project. We get in there, we get done in like two hours. So it's really nice to know that there's kind of a parent organization that can carry water for these little projects. If people want to volunteer or if somebody has an idea for a project that they want to see get off of the ground, is there somebody at your organization that they should reach out to? Is it you? Is it, do you have a sign-up form for volunteering on the website?
Number one, yes, please. They can reach out to any of us to meet. We have info at downtownanicortesalliance.org. But we have a volunteer form on our website. So our website's downtownanicortes.org. And in the nav bar, you'll see there's a, one of the dropdowns has a volunteer. And then we'll collect what you're interested in and all your contact information, and we'll try to match you to something coming up.
Any other questions? Okay, again, thank you very much and appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilors.
It's Janelle.
Okay, next up is item 7C. This is a contract modification, city engineer of record for streets and stormwater. Mr. Rayum.
Try not to make it crackle like it does sometimes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, is a contract modification in the amount of $174,181 for HW Lochner Incorporated. There's two purposes for this modification. First, Public Works wishes to continue an on-call service with HW Lochner to support the engineering division with traffic engineering and stormwater management expertise. The cost to continue this service based on the original contract is $35,000 for the remainder of this year. The original contract was named city engineer of record, but I wanted to clarify, we do have an actual city engineer. This is just a modification of the contract we put in place while we did not have a city engineer on staff. The second and larger piece of this amendment is a contract amendment to generate the Washington State Department of Transportation-approved plans to pave and add ADA ramps and multimodal features to Commercial Avenue from 13th to 34th. Public Works used the on-call contract originally to engage WashDOT on this concept and quickly discovered that it was going to take a lot more money to get WashDOT to allow us to do a project on a state route. That's because they have multiple layers of review. It's a very involved process to get a channelization plan, a engineer's set. Usually you don't have to have an engineer's plan set to do a paving job, so the WashDOT requires one for a state route. So there's been some back and forth with them. We have a bit more work to do, but we're anticipating to have a shovel-ready project designed by the end of this month. This will make the project very eligible for grant funding going forward and hopefully a legislative earmark, which if, we'll talk about that in the future. But we already contacted their offices just to let them know that we probably, we have a potential shovel-ready project. WashDOT has offered to pay $385,000 of the construction costs. I'm sorry, WashDOT is an acronym for Washington State Department of Transportation. Just a little background on WashDOT, the statewide pavement preservation funding is anemic at this point, and the vast majority of any funding is slated for interstates. They don't have funding for state routes, very little funding for state routes. WashDOT also reported to us that Commercial Avenue has needed an overlay for the last 17 years based on its payment index rating, but it ranks low on WashDOT's priorities because the street has a concrete underneath the asphalt. So even if the asphalt's gone, they consider it to be a good road. It's also important to note that this is not unusual for cities and counties to invest in pavement preservation on state routes. Like Anacortes, the state route in most cities is a common corridor and an important, impressionable representation of the city it is within. It's been my experience that it takes the local government to push the project forward for it to happen on a state route. This is a long speech, sorry. I know he's usually short-winded, but here we go, last paragraph. Last, the resulting project will allow for Commercial Avenue to be paved and include installing multimodal amenities that will increase the mobility in our community. It's important to note that the improvement does not preclude or eliminate the work that was done on the envision, on the vision of South Commercial Avenue corridor. It was a plan that was drafted in 2016. Instead, the project provides the city 25-plus more years of fun, of time to fund and implement that plan. An intermediate step is necessary to improve, improve Commercial Avenue's condition and mobility options while funding and phasing can occur over time. The last estimate for the South Commercial Corridor plan in 2020 was between $60 and $85 million. But the mayor and I were trying to figure out what that number was, but it's, it's a big number, basically. The estimate so far to actually perform this work, the actual construction piece for paving from 13th to 34th and all the ADA ramps and all the striping that bike lanes is estimated around $3 million. It's important to note there's about 100 ADA ramps that need to be fixed so the mobility is, people are capable of using Commercial Avenue that have mobility impairments. Last, the pavement preservation funding is slated for the cost of this design cost. Last, the pavement preservation funding is slated for the cost of this design cost. And Public Works is actively looking for grants to fund the construction. Whew, that's it, that was my.
Well, I'm sure there will be questions for Mr. Rayum, and I'll let him have one.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think the amendment here in front of us is relatively straightforward. It adds to the total not-to-exceed amount and allows us to do some of this work. But since we've talked a lot about the project here, if ultimately our cost is three million dollars, I think the city council and everybody sitting out in the audience would support us getting it done, whether we get grant funding or not. Because we do have a one-point-eight or more million-dollar per year pavement management budget. Maybe we couldn't afford it to, to do it in one year, but maybe we could afford to do it in two years. So I, I think, one way or another, we should be getting South Commercial Avenue paved in the next couple of years. Legislative appropriation is not a bad idea, grants not a bad idea. But if, if those don't come through, we still want it done. My major question, though, is about the, the water line that apparently runs the, the length. If we do get free money to do this work, especially that's time limited, I'm supportive of spending that money to get the work done. But if we have opportunities on timing, do we know that we need to or don't need to replace that water line prior to doing the pavement work? And is there a possibility where we could do one half of the street and not the other? And then do the, then do the water line, if we do need to do it? Tell me your thoughts around, around the water line.
Sure, so it's, that water line was built in the fifties. And so it usually has about a hundred-year lifespan. It's a, a larger asbestos concrete pipe, so that means the, the walls are very solid. To cut through, so that, just so you guys know, there's six inches of asphalt and about twelve inches of concrete over the top of, that's what the, that's what Commercial Avenue's made of. So you have to cut through all of that to install that pipe and, or to replace, sorry, the pipe. I would, it's, people, Public Works directors don't like talking about main breaks, but I'm just gonna say now that I'm not that concerned about it. Just because you do have that twelve inches of concrete and six inches of asphalt, a main break wouldn't have the devastating effect that it could have if you didn't have that kind of road on top of it. You do have about another quarter century of life in the actual pipe that's in there. We haven't seen any main breaks in that rug. I'm keep knocking on this podium here. But you, you could have a saddle brake, you know, there's no guarantee that the water, the water line wouldn't need to be repaired. But to replace the entire thing twenty-five years prematurely, I think, is, that's about the same time we would actually need to go back and repave it again if we were on a regular rhythm for a state route.
Okay, so we, we know that the expected lifetime is a hundred years.
Well, so they, they installed that AC pipe, they said a hundred years, but it hasn't been a hundred years yet. But I, based on what I've seen, unless it's a four-inch AC pipe, those need to go.
This is substantially larger than that, right? It's eight inch?
I believe it's eight inch.
Yeah. And our, our philosophy has been to replace the utilities prior to doing the paving work, so we're not tearing up the pavement again. But say the worst happens and you did have a break, we still wouldn't be replacing the entirety of the pipe, right? We would only be replacing the pipe at the location of the break. What would that look like?
That's usually, it depends on how big the break is. So if it's just a cylindrical break along the pipe, it's probably a five-foot patch in the road that you dig down to the break and fix it.
Okay, so based on that, and please let us know if any of those guesses change. But based on that, it doesn't sound like it's unreasonable to pursue the paving work prior to doing the, the main replacement.
Correct, I, I believe so. I think it's a good idea to pave or replace utilities before you pave in some circumstances. But if the pipes aren't that old and they're big enough that, I guess I wouldn't, I would recommend that you don't do that, just as a matter of fact, with your utilities before you pave.
And in this section, are there other utilities that we need to be worried about that have, that are exceeding their expected lifetimes or belong to other entities?
Oh yeah, there's always the telecoms. I can't, I, I can't speak to how much telecoms, but they'd want to move or not move. The sewer's not in commercial, so we're good there. The stormwater's shallow anyways, and it's, it's, it's not a big deal to replace that if we needed to, but it's in decent shape now.
Okay.
It's, it's made out of concrete.
Any other questions, Mr. Rayum? Ms. Moulton?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rayum. I appreciate the, the detail you gave in your presentation. I think that was really helpful. I have a quick acronym question. Whoops, sorry, it's not one that you said, but it's in here. What is P, S, and E? That's one of the things that will be completed by the consultant.
Yeah, that's the engineering, engineering acronym for a plan set, a constructible plan set, an engineered plan set.
Okay. I also, the, the thing that I noticed too is, one of the assumptions is that WashDOT will, will approve our channelization plan if it's acceptable in eight weeks, which is astonishing because it's usually four to six months. So I don't know how you wangled that, but, or how that happened, but great job. And this is a super exciting project, I think, that we've all been longing for, for years. And then all of a sudden, it's like, it's super accessible all of a sudden and basically affordable, so thank you for that, it's really exciting.
No problem.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I move, we approve the contract amendment as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. McDougall to approve the contract award as presented, modification as presented. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Clely McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougall.